Okay. Everybody in favor? That's carried. Confirmation of the minutes. Are there any errors or omissions to the minutes? Not going to have a motion to accept the minutes? Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll move the minutes of July 23rd to meeting.
Thank you. Everybody in favor? Thank you. So now we've got the notice of motion. Are there any notices of motion? Not? Subdivision application. Ask Hillary to come forward. Steve, what he can be on the screen.
There he is. Good morning, Steve.
Morning, Steve.
Steve, can you hear us?
I'm sure to be in different than last week or the last night.
I can hear him, but I can't hear him clearly. You can put the microphone near him. I'm trying to figure where the sound is coming from. So I see, we're just having a bit of a hard time hearing you. Sorry, I probably did something that I shouldn't have done before. Try that. I can hear you, it's just really quiet, so it's nothing to do with you. Try now? Last one? I can try that. Yes, I can do it. I am a techie person. Sorry, I'm not really. Anyway, thank you, Council. Present, start with the subdivisions this morning. We have two of them for your consideration. The first one is subdivision application 2020-0-070. And it's for lot 1, lot 1 and plan 1812411 in the northwest 32919 west of the port. And... This application is to expand an existing subdivision, as you can see in your agenda package. It's, the yard is an existing acre area, they want to utilize that dry corner where the existing infrastructure is in, so they just want to make it so that the acreage encompasses the tree shelter belts and those buildings and then kind of that dry line corner there. But I'll let Steve go through the planning comments and the recommendation. Go ahead, Steve.
All right. This application in front of you is to reexpend. It's a too large an existing 2.52 acre yard that's in the northwest corner. The applicants want to add some additional non-agricultural land to the existing subdivided farmyard that contains a dwelling, in order to enlarge it and include the other improvements that were previously left out in the south end. The original farmyard title was subdivided, it only included the main residential yard area. Left out some of the other farm buildings that are located in, by to the south portion that was originally in that with the agricultural land. This area being included contains a garage, some sheds, a shelter, and a number of grain bins, and an old wood house that's going to be removed. The proposed parcel is angled on the east, kind of southeast side to align with the existing yard boundary and the account for irrigation field there of the agricultural land. The expanded boundary is situated just to the west edge of the field cultivation and additional land is deemed non-agricultural that contains farmyard improvements on it. When the original subdivision was done, the owner at that time wanted to keep the grain bins and stuff with the agricultural land. But the yard title since changed hands, the original owner has also recently passed away. Well, the family that, which is selling agricultural land, now the guy purchasing agricultural land doesn't need or want the grain bins and other yard improvements. That he has an existing yard is willing to take those out and be into his. So that's kind of the reason for the subdivision. The existing parcel contains access from the north, means of a road allowance with an approach in place. There's also separate approach to the west road allowance as well, providing access to the additional yard area being added in. The 2.5 acre parcel has an existing private system for water and septic is treated on site through the initial private septic system. These services will be unaffected by the subdivision. So this application overall conforms to the subdivision criteria for parcel enlargement to a first parcel subdivision from the quarter section. The land area being added, being done by a plan of surveying and consolidated, there's no standalone title. And the resulting 4.5 acre parcel size applies with your land use bylaws. Acre parcel size of between 2 to 10 acres. During the circulation of this application, there was no objections, there was no requirements by utility agencies, since the package went out to you, Acco pipelines has responded. And they have no objection or requirements either. So with that, the proposal that's leaving by law in regards to eligibility and consolidation, no standalone title. So I have recommended approval to you on it. And that would be with the standard conditions of that taxes are paid enough today, development agreement entered into with the county required. And that the 2.303 acre land being subdivided from the adjacent agricultural title be consolidated with existing 2.52 acre by a plan prepared by another land surveyor to consolidate it so that the result to have not be further subdivided without approval of the subdivision authority. On the draft resolution in front of you, there's the fourth condition for a utility company. But we have since heard in Acco, being one of the late ones to respond, that there are actually no easements required. So with those conditions and with the meeting of the bylaw, I have recommended an approval to you on it. That all makes sense? If there's any questions?
Anybody any questions for Steve? If not, can I have a mover? Tori?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move the recommendation that subdivision application 2020-0-070 be approved subject to the conditions outlined in the draft resolution.
Everybody in favor? That's carried. Now we'll go to the next application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, the next application is to do another lot line adjustment. This one is in the hamlet of Chin. They're looking to adjust the eastern parcel edge of the Caddell property so that they can allow for a building that encroaches on the Enns property. And as you can see in your agenda package, it's it's not a big area that they want to rectify, but it will allow for the existing structures on that one property to stay without having any implications for the adjacent landowner. Steve will go through the planning comments and the recommendation.
Yeah, this next application is a boundary line adjustment between two properties. So no, it's a title agreed here. You can see in the drawing, and I tried to add in the last drawing there, I tried to highlight the area that's being subdivided and consolidated over to the west part where the lines being moved, just to try to get those faded a little bit better. It involves subdividing 0.04 acre of land, subdividing that from the west lot and consolidating it to the east. They're by enlarging the east lot from 0.52 acres to 0.16 acres. The reason for this is that the shared property boundary between these two titles it encroaches over into a metal shed building on the east lot at the south end. And it's also located to the east of the construction fence shared between the properties. When the property owners put the fence up, they were safe in the weather. So property likewise and fences, it's not on natural boundary. So the most reinduced boundary will be located approximately 4.9 meters to the west at the north end and 3.52 meters at the very south end. So it's basically following the existing fence line between the two properties. There will be a slight angle at the south end towards the east of the south portion, just to the west side of the metal shed. And that's in order to account for the provincial provinces required setback to the existing private septic field system located on the west property. With our realignment here, it will be an offset of 1.95 meters from the new boundary to the septic field. And that will then bring it into compliance with the provincial standards, which requires a minimum 1.5 meter setback. So we can't go any closer than that. The east lot septic system won't be affected by the subdivision realignment process. So this consolidation and boundary line adjustment will ensure now that there's no property line encroachment through a building between the two properties, and it will follow their fence line. Both lots will continue to have an approach and access to North Hamlet Road, Railway Avenue. As part of this application and certification, it is in the IDP area with N D of Tabor, so the application was circulated to the N D. Tabor responded that they don't have any concerns or objections with the application. As well, none of the utility companies, it won't affect any of their easements or existing utility lines, so there are no easements required from any utility agencies. So overall, the application conforms to the subdivision criteria for reconfiguration of titles for property line reading adjustment. No additional titles being created, that area will be consolidated by a plan of survey. The site services will be unaffected and remain as is. So with that, I have recommended approval to you based on it complying with the subdivision criteria. That approval will be based on three conditions, similar to last subdivision, that the taxes are paid enough today. Second, that a development agreement entered into as required by the county. And the third, that the titles and portions of land be subdivided and consolidated to reconfigure the boundaries of the two parcels done by a plan of survey prepared by another land surveyor, so that the titles cannot be further subdivided without your subdivision authority approval. So it will be with those three conditions. Does that all make sense? Hopefully, diagram show what's going on there? Are there any questions?
Are there any questions for Steve? Really? Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there just one house on each of those lots? And the others are just sort of sheds or whatever kind of buildings?
Yeah. There, that one on the western parcel is kind of a cobbled together house, but it is by permit, just one residence there, and the same on the other property, just one residence.
Are there any other questions? If not, then I'll thank Hillary and Steve for the presentation and can I have somebody to move the recommendation? Tori?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move the recommendation that subdivision application 2020-0-076 be approved subject to the conditions outlined in the draft resolution.
Everybody in favor? That's carried. Now Hillary, then we'll move on to the, there are two reports here, and I think the first one is Hillary. So Hillary, start with her second quarter report of 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Council. So I wanted to go through that second quarter report just to let you know what's been going on within the planning and development department over the last three months, but overall the last six months of the last year. So with regards to the planning and development department, we take direction from bylaws and guiding documents that have been approved by county council, including such things as the municipal development plan, intermunicipal development plans, the land use bylaw area structure plans. And I'll add also the subguiding documents as the industrial commercial land use strategy and also the group country residential land use strategy, which have both been approved by county council. The planning and development department manages the issuance of manages the issuance of development permits and compliance letters, amendments and updates to the land use bylaw, planning projects, intermunicipal relations and referrals, enforcement of the land use bylaw, road closures and licenses, sorry, it says leases there, and also the land sales and leases for the county. In the second quarter, the following projects have been undertaken. The approval of the hamlet of Chin and Kip growth studies. Approval of the group country residential land use strategy. Growth studies for the hamlets of Shaughnessy and Diamond City have been started by the old member of regional services commission. For the development authority, 87 development permit applications have been received up to June 30th. This is a decrease from 2019, which we saw 107. It's to be expected, just given the current situation. But we have seen steady applications being submitted over the last month. So we're kind of having a bit of a rebound. A total of 75 development permits were issued, 12 applications were under review and within the, sorry. This includes the development permit applications made at the end of 2019, so once that carried over the year. Of the permits issued, 24 were residential, 15 were accessory buildings, 16 commercial industrial, eight agricultural, three sub- and six home operations and three miscellaneous. And that's fairly typical for kind of a breakdown in the county of development applications. For building permits, 370 safety tools improvement applications have been submitted. 67 were for building permits, 164 electrical, 70 gas, 48 plumbing, and 21 for private sewage systems. And looking year over year, that's fairly consistent, so. Subdivision applications, subdivision authority approved 12 subdivision applications from January till June. In that time period, there are no appeals to any subdivisions or development permits in the first or second quarter. We, yesterday received our first appeal of a development permit. That's the first one we've had in two and a half years. So it was a good run.
Just go ahead.
Just for clarity, so that'll go under the new subdivision appeal board?
Yeah, that'll go under the new intermunicipal subdivision and development appeal board. That was approved by county council last year.
So I have a question for you.
Sure.
The, how much time do they have to appeal? If they, you know, discreetly, what's going on?
There's three weeks. So once a permit's been issued by the county, there's a three-week appeal period.
Because you just said that was, that was two and a half years ago, or did I deliver on?
Yeah, the first one that we received, this is the first one we've received in two and a half years. So we've, oddly enough, haven't had an appeal in that period of time. So, but this is the first time that we'll be engaging that new intermunicipal subdivision and development appeal board. So that will kind of be a little bit of a new process here, but ORSC is handling, managing the secretary and setting up of that. So in that regard, it'll be very similar to what we've had in the past. For redesignations, we've had a number of redesignations over the last six months. I won't necessarily go through all of them. We do have, the last three on there are ones that will be coming up either today or in the near future in terms of having a public hearing. In intermunicipal relations, we've had the Village of Barron's, the intermunicipal development plan with the Village of Barron's, county council approved that back in May. And we just were notified that Barron's will be holding their public hearing in their meeting in September. So hopefully that will finish that, and that will be the last intermunicipal development plan that the county requires to be completed as per the municipal government act. So that's some good news there. We have drafted amendments to the Town of Coaldale I D P, which were brought forward for your considered, for first reading as of the last council meeting. We'll have the public hearing for that in September. And with regards to the Town of Coalverse, we have the draft joint area structure plan. It was completed and reviewed by the members of the intermunicipal committee. The committee has approved moving forward with that draft and directed the town and county administration along with ORSC staff to prepare the amendments. Those amendments have been drafted, and I do believe, from the county's perspective, we have sent comments into Steve at ORSC, just there's a few things that we would like to have amended. Not anything significant, but I'm not sure where they stand with regards to comments from the town. So we're hoping that that will be completed and presented to each respective councils in the fall. And that concludes my report for the second quarter. Are there any other questions of council at this time?
Morse?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What can we say, how much are we down from a year ago?
Of development permits?
Yeah.
We had 87 submitted from this year and 107 from last year. So we're down 20. So it's, it's not insignificant, but like I said, we have seen an uptake over the last month since things have kind of started opening up again. We've noted that we've had quite a number of applications come in in July, which is somewhat unusual for the county. Usually July is one of our slower application months for receiving applications. So this, this next quarter will probably be a bit more telling in terms of how, what the overall impact of having the lockdown in quarantine has been on development in the county.
Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Barron's not completing their I D P, is that because of COVID and just the office was closed for their, they don't have a public hearing, stuff like that?
Yeah, so they, they were supposed to have theirs around the same time that we had ours in May, but obviously the town didn't have the means to livestream or get the public to do their public engagement or their public hearing. So that's why they've held off until the fall. That's, that's the only reason why it's been delayed, yeah.
Morse?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What came up in the, in the last few weeks, and it came from the county of Vulcan regarding the intensive livestock, what one established in the county of Vulcan and but I found out, the county, I didn't think they could rule over that. I thought the NRCB was the one that made the final decision, but this one person, he was saying, no, the county, if they pursue it and they feel that intensive livestock shouldn't be there, they can still stop it? Or do you know what protocol is?
So not with regards to the feedlots themselves. So that's solely under the jurisdiction of the NRCB. But where I do believe they've, they kind of tried to put the brakes on this particular establishment is through the development permits for the residential and the accessory buildings. I think that's how they were trying to address it from the county's perspective. So I know that, because we've received notice of that particular application, and it, it, there was a denial for the residences being established in that location for that. So that's, that's kind of how, where the county or any municipality can address it. They couldn't outright deny the feedlots because that's not within their jurisdiction. That's still within the NRCB, but I guess, I mean, if you can't...
I was told that, yeah.
Yeah, and that's probably, I mean, it gets kind of broad brush. That's what the county's trying to do is, is, is to compel them to not locate in that certain area by not allowing them their permits. So I know that that appeal, I think they were asking, the appeal board asked for additional information because that's, that's a fairly big application. I think that one is still, they recessed it until the fall. So I think September is when that hearing will be held for that particular application. So, and this is not the first time. I think this is already the second or third time that they've tried to apply, been refused and gone through the appeal process. So...
Yeah, I was impressed about that. They were trying to tell me, these few people from, and they were from the county of Vulcan, no, our county can shut and, and that's a livestock down if they don't want it. There is a little bit more to this story.
Yeah, I do believe so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, there's no more questions? Thank you, Hillary.
Yeah, thank you.
And I would like to, probably, it's, do we have to wait till exactly 9:00?
I think we're close enough. We're close enough in this regard, yeah, I'm fine. Let's start right now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, then I would like to ask somebody to move that we commence the public hearing. Steve? Everybody in favor? Carry. Hey, Hillary, I think it's for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is an application needing the property in question, which is plan 9610161, lot 4, lot 2. I'll just highlight it on the screen here. This property, it's just to the east of Town of Picture Views. And the application is to amend the land use bylaw from group country residential to direct control, and it would allow for the existing light industrial business, which is premier woodworking, to operate on the property. I know that this was, we went through this in the first reading, but just to kind of reiterate some of the background with regards to this application. We did receive notice that there is this business located in this location. And upon review of the file, we found that there was no permits allowing for the business and that it was in fact its own group country residential, which as you probably are aware, only allows for residences, not businesses. So when we just...
Carrie, after questioning before...
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before that became group residential down there, I think that business was there already, right?
Not that I'm aware of. I think it's...
Well, that's, that's the way I thought it was, and, but I guess if you're not aware of it, then probably it's never been recorded or something. So, yeah, that's why we gotta go ahead, but we're doing it.
But it, it was there since 95 already, wasn't it?
It's been there, from what I understand, for about 25 years, which is, yeah, 1995. So the zoning... So, the zoning changed in the nineteen eighties.
Oh, question.
Yeah. So, that, that's the information that we have on file, is when it was redesignated to allow for those residences, those parcels there. And then, you know, businesses, they, they, you know, things happen, they pop up, you know, somebody starts a little home-based business and all of a sudden it grows, which is, which is great, you know, and that's what we want to see. It's just important to have the appropriate zoning and also permits in place to ensure that there's no conflicts arising in the future. So, we did have a lot of, I had a lot of discussions with the particular owner, and at the end of the day, we decided direct control would be able to allow the business to be in relocation without further, without having any further negative impacts to say the acreages that are adjacent to it. And due to kind of the, the COVID, they, there's things were somewhat delayed for them and for us, so it took a little bit for us to get things rolling, but at the end of the day, we, we agreed upon this particular course of action and to bring it forward for council's consideration. The application was submitted to the other county departments, the Town of Picture View, and external agencies for review. There was no comments or concerns expressed with regards to the proposed bylaw from anybody. The Town of Picture View never did respond to the circulation, but it is somewhat further away, further consideration. It wouldn't have any impact on the town itself, in my opinion. We did do a review of the application itself from the planning and development department's consideration and also for your consideration, see how it fit in with the municipal development plan. And so, when considering any commercial or industrial uses, we look at the impact to adjacent land uses, access to established transportation networks such as roads, county roads, and also highways, suitable storm drainage, the provision of services such as water, sewer, and utilities. Is it agriculturally related, and is it an efficient use of the land? The proposed redesignation does meet some of the criteria, but not necessarily all of the criteria. The lands are not considered high-quality agricultural lands for that, taking anything out of agricultural production. There does not appear to be an impact to the enjoyment of the adjacent residential properties. We've never really had any complaints. I know there's been some road issues here and there, and I do believe where the county is working on, or have already worked on upgrading that particular road. So, that will help with regards to facilitating traffic in that area. The parcel has access to Highway five nineteen, which is enabled them to have good highway access for the business. Any in future expansion of the parcel would require a drainage plan, although they don't really have a lot of room to expand their building on the property anymore, just given their parking requirements and that they use some of the area for outdoor storage. The applicant, they already have their utilities and services in place, has, the business has been there for quite some time, and the use of the business provided, provides a service to the region, not necessarily agriculturally related, but they do provide a service to the larger Lefford County area, from what I understand. It approved the direct control would limit the development to what's currently operating on the property, and although these types of uses would not be typically deemed suitable for a residential area, as the business has been operating in some capacity at the site for the last twenty-five years, it does not, and does not appear to affect the decent landowners. We feel that it's suitable to allow for this business to continue in its, its capacity that it's at right now. We did advertise this bylaw in the July fourteenth and twenty-first editions of the Sunny South News, and notice was sent to the adjacent landowners, adjacent and affected landowners. We didn't receive any comments with regards to that particular notice being sent out. For alternatives and kind of what county council can consider with this application, you, you may refuse second reading of this bylaw if there are concerns with the continued use of the parcel for light industrial commercial uses in a group country residential area. The refusal of the bylaw would require that the business relocate and would eliminate any future, future impacts to the adjacent industrial, owned by residences. But as I mentioned, we didn't receive any negative feedback with regards to this business located in the area. When I did do a site visit there, you know, it's, it is set back from the road. It's not, it's not loud or noisy from when I was there, I was there kind of in the middle of the day. There was a little bit of customer business going on at the site, but I wouldn't say nothing that was too orderous, but I didn't see any heavy truck traffic at that time. But the, those are just my observations of the site at that time.
Yeah, and Hillary, I think through that, the home that's so close to there is also over by them, I think.
Um, there is, I think the owner lives right next door, so that's obviously helpful for them. With regards to a recommendation, I do recommend that second and third reading of this bylaw be read and approved by county council, and the reason for that is that the direct control as, as drafted will limit the uses on the property to what is currently there, and as mentioned before, the business does not appear to adversely impact, impact the adjacent residential properties. And I think with the, with the county's, with regards to the road, so that, that will eliminate some of the, even if there were some concerns, one of the concerns with regards to the state of the, the road in that location. So, with that, our, that's my, concludes my report. Are there any other questions of council with regards to this particular application?
Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The blue-green outline, that's the sub, it's subdivided at that, that's what you were kind of referencing, that there's not much room to expand in that?
Yeah, so you can kind of see from here the size of the parcel, and this, this is the building that's currently on site. It was, it's kind of unfortunate that they... So, we didn't really even know the extent of it until I went out there, or, I mean, from the ortho photos, but you can see they kind of used the yard for storage. There's not a lot of space for them to expand, and from what I understand from the owner, that they, they kind of have what they need at that location for the working side of their business, so.
Go ahead, Steve.
So, was that subdivided back when they did the group country residential back in the eighties also? Or not that it really mattered?
I, it was subdivided a couple of times. This land, it was last subdivided in ninety-six, or probably in ninety-five, and then approved, everything went through in ninety-six, but the zoning was there earlier. So, for, they've subdivided this particular area, you can kind of see, I'll just zoom out a bit, you can kind of see this whole area has been subdivided over time historically, and into the eighties and then into the nineties, so.
Any more questions of council? If not, then since the attendance at the public hearing is not allowed at this time, anyone, and I'm talking to people that are online or viewing us, that, that are looking to provide comments or ask questions during the public hear, or hearing, are asked to call our office at phone number four oh three, three two eight, five five two five. Again, if you want to have any questions or you want to provide any comments, phone four oh three, three two eight, five five two five. Thank you. And now I'd like to ask for a motion to recess the public hearing. Morris, everybody in favor?
Until when, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, we will re-appeal at eleven thirty.
Okay, perfect. Jen, can you get Martin?
We're just gonna get Martin.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
I'm swayed.
Yeah, he can't see.
My eyes, can you see my eyes are swayed?
Yeah. You have too much to talk.
Yes, I have a big town.
Thanks, Jen.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, they just did something, and they slowly, they were just figuring, because the first there was one building, and then they were not owned up, and they're not owned up. I guess, I would still be in time to confirm it, I would say. But they're doing good there. I don't think they're sorry. Yeah, they boil on. Well, good, good morning, Martin, and whenever you're ready, then you can start with your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning to you, good morning to all members of council. It's nice for me to be able to come before you here today and give you a little bit of an update, because really the last time I got to sit with all of you at once was at our early March corporate retreat planning session. You might remember that, when we were at the hotel there. So, it's been, needless to say, a very interesting time since then, not what we were expecting by far, but the county has kept busy and kept moving forward, and I have too in my work. So, it's an opportunity for me to tell you a little bit about what I've been doing since March till the present time, and give you a chance to ask questions or make comments as necessary. So, it wasn't too long after our planning session, and of course, with COVID nineteen started to get really big, and things really shut down quickly there mid-March, and it did definitely have an, an impact on the economy. It's funny, Lefford County with so much agriculture, I think it was a little bit different. Agricultural operations perhaps not being effective in quite the same way as, let's say hospitality, tourism, transportation, some of the other industries, but nevertheless, you know, inquiries, things that I've been working on, it just kind of dried up, I'd say, for the balance of March and for the month of April. One thing I was able to do though, is as council is aware, there's a number of operations in the county that rely on temporary foreign workers, many coming from Mexico, and so one of the, the county businesses reached out to me, asking for some assistance on that, and with the relationship we have with the Mexican consulate in Calgary, I was able to kind of work on that a little bit and facilitate that, and in the end, they were able to get their workers up and have them do their quarantine time and then get working. And the nice thing is, again, as council will be aware, we haven't had significant outbreaks with our temporary foreign workers. That was an issue in some parts of Canada, but that has not been an issue here in southern Alberta, and that's really good to see. So, that was kind of one of the first things that happened, once quarantine started. One thing that Ann and Doug and myself have kept very busy on is the whole broadband internet question. We were, of course, working on the, the project of getting better, faster, more reliable, and less expensive broadband capacity to county businesses. That's been kind of a, an odyssey, for lack of a better word, but in our, in our work, we actually got connected to a lawyer and a specialist up in Edmonton, a consultant that works on this, and he's been working for the county, working for us, to look at solutions and look at what would make the most sense. And he's just in the process of finalizing his report, and we will bring him down to present his findings to council directly, probably in September at some point, I think is the plan. So, that took a fair bit of time. Ann and Doug and I were meeting at one point pretty much once a week as we were trying to work through this, but the good news is we've, we've made some progress and we've got, I think, the right guy working on it right now. Fortunately, in the county itself, visit, many of the businesses were able to continue with, with operations. At Transmark, they finished their two, or almost finished, they outside, they are finished, their two railcar repair shops that they had long planned, and that was kind of nice to see those going up. And as you probably all heard, Lefford Biogas is going ahead with a seven million dollar expansion project right there. We would have had a grand opening at the Cortiva Canola facility in July. They completed their two-phase expansion at that facility, but unfortunately due to COVID nineteen, that has been postponed until such time as we can do it safely and healthily. Not surprisingly maybe to you all, March, April, and into May, I was not receiving many business inquiries, but in May, I, I got one business inquiry for a fairly large factory. They're looking around Alberta at a location where they could put this factory up. To make building material, building board, similar to particle board, but better. Ironically enough, we were kind of struggling to find enough straw for them in a hundred kilometer radius, which is kind of the radius they're looking for. Having the confined feeding operations, their needs for bedding straw and whatnot, actually kind of worked against us in this particular case. It's not done yet, but it was a challenge. Usually the challenges are water and wastewater, in this particular case, it was not having enough straw, ironically enough. But anyway, that was, yes.
Just a question on that straw there.
Yes.
Who were you, who did you contact for getting, trying to get straw in a hundred kilometer radius? What, what kind of people were you looking at?
Um, I contacted Alberta Agriculture, and through Alberta Agriculture, I got put in contact with a private company that kind of looks at cropping and keeps track of cropping levels and everything, and in both cases, the numbers I got from Alberta Agriculture and this private company were fairly consistent within a few ten thousands of tons of material there.
Because I know there's, there's a lot of straw and, and dealers and stuff like that, that deal in that all the time, and maybe they are closer to the reality of where we can get it than, than the province, for example.
Yes, that, no, that's a good point, Mr. Chairman, and actually, we did do that. I was able to then connect the company after I kind of found those preliminary numbers for them, connected them with a local straw baler here, and I'm going to be checking in to see how that conversation went. But your point is very well taken. Just a couple of, a couple of other quick points here. We are working on an updated version, actually, we have consultants working on an updated version of the Agricultural Economic Impact Report that we did in twenty fourteen. That report was done by a consulting group, Sericon. We've engaged them again. They are looking at the ongoing economic impact of agriculture, value-added agriculture for Lefford County. That report has been very useful for me, and I think for the county itself, being able to go to Edmonton or talk with deputy ministers or talk with companies, and be able to put numbers to the fact that, you know, we are indeed one of the largest agricultural-producing rural municipalities in this province, and you actually have some numbers and facts to back it up. That report should be done either towards the end of this month or early, early September, at which point it will be presented to council. Some preliminary news, again, hopefully this comes as no surprise, is good. The agricultural economic impact has risen over the last six years in the county. So, in other words, it's generating even more money than we had six years ago, which is what one would hope for, what would expect, but the good news is the numbers are confirming that, the urban numbers are confirming that. So, that will come out probably to present to council in September at some point. And finally, we continue to work on the Highway three Agrofood Corridor. There is a local initiative because that Highway three Agrofood Corridor is kind of getting some traction. It's actually being mentioned by provincial officials now by name, which is really good, so it's kind of getting an identity there, to look at Highway four as a transportation logistics corridor. So, again, kind of giving Highway four a bit of an identity from the Coops border crossing to Lefford, and of course, Lefford County would be key in there, is a key stretch of that, of that highway. And of course, Transmark being there, and us having the land, Stewart siding, the Taylor Business Park, in and around the Vitara Terminal, there's lots of potential in that area. And so, it's an exciting thing, but that's just getting started. We've just had a preliminary meeting, actually, last week, Ellen Sterling could talk about that. So, you know, I mean, again, COVID nineteen has thrown a curveball to us. I think, again, the county has come through relatively well. Agriculture is kind of saving us because it hasn't been affected in quite the same way as many other industries, but the longer-term impacts of COVID nineteen and the economy... But the longer-term impacts of COVID-19 and the economy, it's still hard to predict. You know, everybody's trying to figure out what's going to happen and what shape it will take. So we're doing the best we can. I think that we're fairly well-positioned, but, you know, ongoing work required. So, Mr. Chairman, that's kind of my report at a high level, but I certainly would welcome any questions, comments that yourself or members of council may have.
Thank you, Martin, for that presentation. Are there any questions for Morris?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to you, Martin. You know, this thing is always on my mind, you know, about broadband, you know, like there is certain businesses in the county, they want to have, and they got it on their own, right? And broadband is not basically put in by a private company, or is it, well, it's government-controlled, I believe, to a certain extent. However, they wouldn't hold it up. But if this private company, when they're there, and when some of the businesses need it, how come they can't get it? Is it the cost, or what is it? And if it is the cost, why do we need to be so much involved? Because, is it because they feel that we should subsidize that, or through government funding, either from the county or provincially, or even federally, for that, you know? But the thing is, it looks like to me, if a business needs it not badly, they can get it. So what's the hold on?
Thank you, Councillor Zinstra, and Mr. Chairman, Councillor Zinstra. You bring up some excellent questions, and those are the really big questions around this. One of the big things is cost. You've hit the nail right on the head with that question. You know, with unlimited money, pretty much anything is possible. But what businesses are finding is, in rural areas, you might have a private company that has a fiber optic line running right adjacent to the property, in some cases, right across the property. And you'd think, well, what's the problem? You trench, you dig a trench, you put in the conduit, you put in some fiber, you know, what, maybe $10,000 if that, it should be pretty straightforward. And these companies are finding that, well, we got one along Highway 4, actually two, and this gives you an example of the costs that are involved. One company went with Telus, and they had to spend north of $200,000 to get a hookup there of the line into the fiber, to get the speeds that they wanted. Another company more recently went with a different internet provider. The line, again, it's along Highway 4, goes right by their property. I put them in contact, and then I was going to let the private sector do its thing, buy the company, the private company. And I followed up with the company. They were actually at the meeting in Sterling talking about the Highway 4 corridor. And I said, well, whatever happened with that, you know, how did the discussions go? And they said, oh, it was good discussions, but the cost was going to be $80,000, and we just can't justify that, you know? So what we're hoping is, you know, you hear reports, you read reports, the federal government recognizes that rural internet's a problem. The provincial government supposedly recognizes that this is a problem. But these costs, you're right, Councillor Zinstra, that indeed, the service is available, but the costs are prohibitive to the business community. And, you know, we should see some movement on the federal and provincial levels, whether it's subsidies or helping to reduce the connectivity costs so that these businesses can actually plug in at a rate that's reasonable to them. So just to finish my thought on that, when the consultant that's working on the broadband for us to you, apparently, he'll be addressing that issue exactly. Why is it costing so much? What is, why is it so expensive? And what is the federal and provincial governments, what are they doing, to hopefully address that and reduce some of these barriers? The thing that may happen is, we may not actually have to invest in physical infrastructure. There's a lot going on in the world of satellites right now, satellite-based internet, which would allow potentially us to bypass any kind of need for laying fiber altogether. So again, I won't say too much more, I probably already talked quite a bit on this, but our consultant, when he gives a report, will talk in a lot more detail.
Just Anne.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on that, too. To your question, Councillor Zinstra, why are municipalities involved? You're absolutely right. The reason why is there's so many moving parts and so many things that are changing all the time. There's two recent announcements that came out, trying to get some of these larger companies to have more reasonable broadband costs, and the second announcement was funding. We get involved because we need to lobby so that we can have our business have access to broadband. And Martin is correct, we don't necessarily have to own the broadband fiber, but we do have to put pressure on both the federal and provincial government so that the broadband is there, because everybody in this room knows that agriculture is so tech-oriented now, and it's just getting more so every day. So our infrastructure is, we need to bring businesses into the county to offset our taxes. We need them to have these infrastructure pieces, and broadband is as important now as water, at least water.
That's correct.
Morris?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hear you loud and clear, or whatever, you know. To me, it looks like, you know, if I own the business and I certainly depend on broadband, you know, then I don't know what pizza, there's no difference, or in whatever piece of equipment or truck, or whatever down there. You buy it to make the business go, and you would think the same thing with broadband. So maybe I'm looking at it, you know, that they can do without broadband. That's the way I'm going to look at it, because if they didn't, they would jump on the bandwagon and get it. You know, I know what's the cost, but anything, any piece of machinery you buy nowadays, you know, it's a lot of money.
Tori?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to follow up on what Morris said, I think what I've been hearing and what I've learned is that it's not just a, it's not an asset for that company, it's not something you just purchase like a piece of machinery. It's, looking forward, it's going to be like a utility. So if you have a company that's coming in, it's like Anne said, it's wastewater, it's water. If you have a company that wants to develop, let's take a vegetable processor, well, if there's no water, we're not telling them that they have to go out and source the water. And I think, looking forward, I think that's how we're going to have to treat broadband as a utility, and that we don't have to provide it, as Martin said. But I think we have to be in a position where we can at least facilitate those connections so that it can be provided, because we're going to lose a competitive advantage if we can't offer that in our county and our neighbor can. It's just like those other utilities, it's water, it's wastewater, and I think broadband becomes part of that conversation, too.
Yeah. If I may, Mr. Chairman, I think both Councillors Zinstra and Councillor Tori are making very good points here. The thing is, and I think that is the big difference, is if you spend, whether it's $80,000 or $200,000 to connect, you know, it's true, you don't have an asset at the end of it. I mean, if you go and buy a combine, if you go and buy a pickup truck, you know, yes, it starts to depreciate, but you still actually have something sitting there that you could resell or that you can point to and say, well, here's the asset that I got. With the connectivity fees is, you're just, you know, paying essentially to connect in and then start paying for a service. You don't have anything for your $80,000 or $200,000 aside from that you've connected, and then you're also then starting to pay for that service. It's so different, and it's unfair. It's the challenge that rural areas are facing right now. In the city, if I want Telus internet or Shaw internet or whatever, I call the company. I don't have to pay anything extra. They come, they bring the equipment, they connect me up, and away I go, and at fairly high speeds, too, and then, you know, the monthly rate is whatever it is. I don't have to, they don't come and tell me, well, you know, Martin, if you want, you know, our internet service, we're going to have to dig a trench from the box over to your house, and it's going to be $20,000. How do you feel about that internet right now? And so, I mean, it's not the perfect comparison, and I'm certainly not trying to make light of the situation. But I think that that's something that, again, it's becoming a real need, it's a business need. It's not even just kind of a, well, it's nice if we have it, but if we don't, we'll kind of get by. As the years pass, it's becoming a requirement. And it's true, if we don't provide it and some of the other municipalities have it, it becomes that much harder for us to be competitive. But again, the good news is, is I think that the private sector, maybe with federal and provincial help, is going to come into that gap. We may not need to get as involved as I thought we may have to, and that's the positive.
Okay. Thank you, Martin, for that, and we're running out of time here
Yes.
because we've got an agenda coming at 10 o'clock. And I think that when Peter comes here in September, I think we've got a lot of questions for him. And thank you, Martin, and I'd like to ask for Anne.
Just to make, just so council knows, we will make sure that the report is available to you well ahead of time so you'll have time to go through it, to be prepared.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to?
Thanks, Martin.
We're out of time, Missy.
Oh. He can come back, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I got one more question about something else.
Write it down so you don't forget.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, thank you, Martin.
Thanks, Martin. We'll call you back after we're done.
So now we got the presentation of Diana Rung, Alberta Conservation Association. And we're trying to get her online.
Diana, are you there? Hi, Diana, it's Tara from the county. If you can unmute your microphone, we're ready for your presentation. Sorry?
No, I didn't.
Is she there, Diana? I mean, Tara just emailed her. Okay.
She's there, but she says it's kind of muted, so she's kind of sort of trying not to watch us.
She's trying to talk to her fish.
Yeah. And we can also phone her herself.
Yeah, you can, yeah, call in.
Hello? Hi, Diana, Tara Collins from Lethbridge County.
Morning.
Hi. So we'll just do it this way, if that's okay? Can you hear us?
Hello?
Hello, can you hear us?
Good morning.
Hi, Diana, can you hear us?
Good morning.
Hi, Diana, this is Tara, can you hear us?
Hi, yeah, I can now, sorry about that.
Well, that's okay, and we can hear you. So if you just want to walk us through, we're on the slide number one.
Thank you very much. Sorry about that, Dave. So thank you very much for inviting me this morning. My name is Diana Rung. I'm a biologist with Alberta Conservation Association, also known as ACA. I'm based out of Red Deer, and I'm the lead in the ACA Fish Locking Project. Though I work in central Alberta, I've been in southern Alberta for several years and went to college and university in Lethbridge. ACA was formed in 1997 and incorporated under the Society Act to continue and enhance the work previously accomplished by the Alberta Fish and Wildlife Trust Fund. We are a non-profit organization and a delegated administrative organization of Alberta Environment and Parks, also known as ADP. We deliver projects that are outlined in an MOU. So our vision in Alberta was an abundance of diversity of wildlife, fish, and their habitat. We promote fishing, hunting, and other outdoor pursuits. Next slide, please.
Kate?
Oh, I can't see the screen, just one moment. We have four main program areas: the fisheries, wildlife, land management, and communications. Our fisheries projects include trout stocking, leakeration, and many other initiatives that study native fish and promotes sport fishing in Alberta. Today, I'm going to talk very briefly about our ACA Fish Locking Project. Next slide, please.
Kate?
I can't see your screen, so I'll just go with saying next slide. So this is a somewhat blurry screenshot of our stock lakes and ponds page on our website. It is an interactive map where people can search for places to go fishing and find information regarding the timing of the trout stocking, species, and strains of trout that we stock. This map includes information on lakes that we stock as well as lakes that are stocked by ADP. So we stock 64 ponds with rainbow, rook, and brown trout. And our ponds are shown as the blue points on this map. As I say, it's interactive and a very cool site. It's brand new this year, so we're very proud of it. Next slide, please. Each year, we hire trout suppliers to grow and deliver trout. This year, we stocked approximately 105,000 rainbow, rook, and brown trout. These photos show the stages of trout selection from aging to maturation to trout that is almost ready to be stocked. Next slide, please. By, so by April or May, our trout are grown to stocking size. Trout are stocked at least once prior to the meal on weekend. At some lakes, we stock twice, generally, once in late April or early May, and then sometimes in June. The trout we stock are about 20 centimeters in size, and they weigh between 85 to 110 grams. We have standards that we keep for the actual size that goes into the lake. Prior to stocking, fish are inspected, they're measured, they're weighed, and loaded onto delivery trucks. The number of fish assigned to a lake is determined on factors such as known use by anglers, so angling pressure, the surface area of the lake, the depth of the lake, and other factors included water quality. Very important, because trout have specific needs for water quality. Next slide, please. I'm not sure if it's working, I can't see your screen, but here is a video clip of a stocking in progress. Is it working?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow.
I'll let you know when it's done.
Okay.
Oh, that's great.
Okay.
Excellent. And so, next slide, please. So I just included these two photos. Let's see, the video clip didn't work. And it just shows again how the trout are stocked. We have a local link contacted for each lake that we stock. The lake contact meets a fish truck at a designated time to witness the stocking. Many communities invite school groups or recreational groups to join the fun. It really is a community affair to watch the fish stocking. When trout are stocked, a new hose is viewed to each lake, and the truck and all equipment are disinfected between flights. And that's a pretty darn nice picture of some rainbow trout right there. Next slide, please. There are two ACA stocked lakes in Lethbridge County. They are in McQuillan Reservoir and McVinni Reservoir. The first is McQuillan Reservoir. We stocked it twice this spring with 4,700 rainbow trout total, so that was in two stockings. There's a campground at this reservoir, and it's one of the busiest fishing spots in southern Alberta. Next slide, please. McVinni Reservoir is a chrom site as McQuillan Reservoir is. ACA helps manage it. We plant and maintain sheltered areas as well as grass mixes for upland gaming bird habitat. This is one of many facilities in these sites. As far as stocking goes, we stocked this reservoir with 4,200 rainbow trout this year, also in two stockings. Our cost stocking is water-wise, this year is about $26,000. That price fluctuates each year depending on the price of fish. We believe that both of these sites provide really important recreational benefits for many folks in Lethbridge County. Next slide, please. Here is our current list of partners. As you can see, we've partnered with small and large businesses as well as numerous municipalities. We acknowledge and celebrate our partners on various social media to publicly thank them. Each of these partners help to sponsor fish stocking at one or more lakes. Without our partners, we would not be able to deliver the trout stocking program as well as we do. Earlier this year, Lethbridge County contributed $1,000 towards trout stocking, which we really appreciate. Thank you very much. My apologies for the title is on this slide. But like I said, we are very grateful to our partners. I'm here today to request if Lethbridge County is interested in partnering with us on a more formal and continual basis by becoming one of our corporate partners. We use a memorandum of understanding to formalize partnerships. Our current partners have committed between $500 to $5,000 per year for an ongoing commitment of three to five years, depending on circumstances. MOUs can be customized to suit their partner's wishes. Partnerships are completely voluntary, and any amount of funding is helpful and appreciated. If you're interested in learning more, I or one of our staff is happy to discuss this further. I could also send a blank template of our MOU for your review. And the next slide, please, is our Kids Can Catch Events. Each year, we, many Kids Can Catch events are held across the province. Volunteers are on hand to help teach new anglers and their families how to fish. Kids Can Catch Events promote an interest for fishing for kids and their families. We can help organize these fund fishing days for clubs or municipalities interested. And I know it's been done at Taylor Pond in the past, which is not in your county, but nearby. This year, this program will scale back due to COVID, but we hope that we'll be able to be up and running next year if it stays to do so. And, next slide, please. We have a project called ACA Trout Pond Expansion Project related to trout stocking, of course. And we're always looking for new ponds to add to our stocking list. There is project-specific criteria that has to be met in order for a pond to be a suitable candidate. New lakes can be on private land if the landowner allows public access, or it can be on public land. Included this slide here today to inquire to whether the county perhaps has a bore pit or another lake that might be suitable. If yes, we'd be happy to talk to you as well. There are a couple contacts there. Scott Stewart is a co-maker, who's working on this project, as well as myself. Next slide, please. And that's all I have. It's a bad pun.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much for the presentation, and I'll ask if there's any questions for you, again. Morris?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Diana, and it's a good presentation. I somewhat know quite a bit about McVinni Reservoir. And I believe the ALNID, the Lethbridge Northern Intigation District, they put type in that area, and I believe they typed right around that lake, and I... This, your organization had any contact with the ALNID, see if they can still provide fresh water to that lake, because the fresh water is very important.
As far as I know, I'm not sure about McVinni, but we do contribute to funds to the Saint Mary Irrigation District for to fill the McQuillan Reservoir. I'm not sure about McVinni, I'm sorry.
You're not sure about McVinni, yeah?
No.
Yeah, I should have checked into that, but I didn't either, and I'm not sure either, so... Because fresh water is pretty important for the trout, right?
Yes, I agree. Yes, the water quality is very important.
Just a suggestion that perhaps we could put Diana within contact with ALNID.
Did you hear that, Diane?
Sure, yes, I can, yes.
Okay, thank you. Yep, go ahead, and Morris?
Yeah, just a follow-up comment about, you know, like, I'm... Like, I know quite a few people that like fishing, and I look at it as a great recreation thing in our municipality, and without all the burdens down there, and I certainly, yeah, hope that we can keep certain amount of funding in place without, because that's, it comes down to recreation.
Yes. Well, I agree, it's really important, and we will continue with the stocking. We've been doing it for more than 20 years at this site and on these new sites, and we plan to continue. It's just that our funding comes from various sources, and partnership is an important source of funding, so it's, has been really helpful for the partners that have come on board.
Anne?
Just a suggestion, Diana, and to council, that a report come back in September just outlining if we were going to a partnership agreement and more information, so council could make a fulsome decision on this request.
In September, okay.
Yeah.
Good, okay. Thank you, and then, I'll just wait to hear Josh come in then?
We, yes, but we have, we have one more question here for you.
Yes, of course.
Hi Diana, this is Tori Campbell. Just thank you for the correspondence. I know we've spoken and gone back and forth on email, so thank you for the correspondence, and thanks for being here today. And I just wanted to follow up on your comment about McQuillan. Yes, it is, I'm about five minutes away from McQuillan, and it is heavily fished, you know. Any evening of the spring, summer, it's pretty rare that you can drive by there and not see, you know, some kids and their parents along the shore there fishing. And even in the winter, it's quite common. Most days, you'll see at least one shack or someone sitting over a hole. So it is, it is very well-used, and we're fortunate to have it. And as, and alluded to, I look forward to having a report in September and hope that we can come to some type of an agreement, as council, where we can provide some type of funding going forward. I appreciate the work you do, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. We're happy to do it. We love doing that work, and we know especially this year that people have been out fishing a lot more than they have in past years, just because they're staying closer to home. And we've had a lot of positive feedback from the public about all of our ponds, so we're pretty proud of that program for sure. Thank you.
Okay, if there are no more questions. Diane, thank you very much for the presentation, and like I mentioned a couple times already, that our partnership will be discussed later on in September.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you again.
Bye.
I would suggest we, can we make a break, if that's okay with Hillary?
Oh, yeah, I'm good.
It's all about God.
I guess, don't want, don't want to get in trouble with her.
Don't, don't. Thank you.
We're gonna turn our attention back before, like, we've been remarking Hillary here. Doesn't matter.
Yeah, 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 we want to finish that one.
Yeah, it's one of those little expressions there, and there might be, so... Do you want any donuts?
Do you need a donut?
I don't need a donut.
Fresh air.
I would love some donuts. Never know what... Was whether we're recording or not recording. My sister does it. She has to wear one all day, like, every day.
Where's she work?
She works at the hospital.
Mr. Chairman, who did Counselor Campbell? Mr. Chairman, who did Counselor Campbell, thank you for your question. Yes, I have been in touch with various businesses, but it hasn't been systematic, so this is anecdotal. Anecdotally, we've been doing, our businesses have been doing quite well. We, again, have agriculture as our kind of foundational sector, and the dynamics for agriculture are quite different than they are for a lot of the urban commercial and urban hospitality and so forth. So, you know, I wouldn't, I don't know if I could safely say that they're all doing great, but in general, it seems that many of them are doing fine. And some of them actually, for example, along Highway 4, a couple of the businesses, you know, they recognize the seriousness of COVID-19, but they've actually said, like, business is never better kind of thing, you know? And again, they're not wishing that, you know, COVID-19 continues, but they're actually have not been affected at all. I think for the county's businesses and for the agricultural sector, it will really depend over the medium to long term what happens with COVID-19 and the dynamics with our economy. I think, like, for this year, we won't see as big an effect as, let's say, Lethbridge County, Edmonton, that what happens will depend on what happens over the coming couple of years, if that answers your question.
Yes, please, Mark.
I think you have to be made aware too, Martin, that, like, in the cattle industry, with not as much slaughtering going on, just my own industry, dairy industry, I mean, we've been cut, like, majorly, chicken industry, over 15%. And so, I mean, the agriculture sector is affected and quite dramatically.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and your points are well-taken. Another one that comes to mind, of course, is the potato industry as well. There haven't been, you know, nearly as many french fries being consumed because the restaurants, the bars, and everything were all closed, and so they were sitting on fairly large stockpiles. And so, yeah, I mean, it's, in a, in a short answer to a question, it's hard to kind of, to get the nuances, but you're right, it's not just purely a rosy picture. The thing I think that gives hope, more hope for the agricultural sector is, we aren't, the world doesn't stop eating, and we don't stop eating. So even though there are these temporary, and in some cases very serious disruptions, over the long haul, the dynamics aren't shifting. If I were to compare it, let's say, to the airline industry, boy, I'm glad I don't have stocks of airlines right now, because I do not know how some of them are going to survive. Well, I just saw yesterday in the news, Virgin Atlantic declared bankruptcy, and probably the others. So you're, you're very right. It's not that their agriculture has been untouched, in some cases being quite serious, but over the medium to long term, I see agriculture continually steady, whereas I see other sectors really struggling.
Anne?
Just a suggestion, Martin, perhaps that we could reach out to the various growers' association, and that might, so we could give council some feedback, the dairy association, the sugar beet, the potato association. Just to, just to put some feelers out and just ask how they're doing, just so we can get some clarity on that?
I think that would be an excellent idea, and then I can come back to council and kind of say, well, from the growers' association's perspective, whether it's dairy, potatoes, sugar beets, canola, here's what they're saying, here's the official word, and that might give us a better picture.
Good, good thought. Anne, Tori?
All right.
Sure.
Morris? You go, Morris. You go ahead, and I'll go after you, because maybe after you, I don't need to say anything.
No, Richard. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to just make a note, Martin, it's something you did touch on in your successes here. The whole leaf signing deal with Wendy's to provide, be the exclusive provider, I believe, for lettuce for the Wendy's chain in Canada. And I just want to say, I think it's a real feather in the hat to the county that maybe didn't get as much traction as it could have. It was a, it was a national story. I saw it on, you know, throughout broadcasts throughout Canada. It was in all the leading broadcasts here in Alberta. And there was a lot of notes made about Coldale's own whole leaf and Alberta's own whole leaf, and, and I just, I guess, just for, to make a point, we're very fortunate that it's actually located in Lethbridge County, and it's a Lethbridge County business, and, and I think Whole Leaf itself has done a good job of indicating that and promoting itself. And just through its social media, and I think what we're seeing is a real push to, for local. Companies want to be seen as dealing locally, buying locally, and especially with the food chain, if we can make those local connections, I think it's really important. And I just thought that that was a really good, feel-good story for the county, and, and one that I hope that people know that it's something that I think the county should be very proud of.
Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you, and thank you, Counselor Campbell. Mr. Chairman, that story was indeed a very good news story, and it's why I included it here. I will confess, this story occurred, I was on my summer vacation when it kind of rolled. I was personally quite disappointed to see Whole Leaf making, you know, these explicit notes that this was Coldale and everything, when indeed it was Lethbridge County. And, you know, I mean, again, you know, the real success is that we have them in the county, and, you know, it's showing that our strategy of adding agriculture and agricultural processing is working. But it is disappointing, especially because the spokesperson for Whole Leaf, a very nice lady, Maggie and I had worked with her on the county's promotional video last summer, specifically promoting Lethbridge County, and Whole Leaf was so happy with Lethbridge County. So why the company then in 2020 was saying Coldale, I'm still trying to kind of piece that out, why they decided to go a different route. The only thing that they do in Coldale is collect their mail. I mean, that's, that's it, that's the only thing. I think sometimes they just kind of pick the closest town or city and then just kind of use that as a geographic reference point. But it was disappointing to me, and it just shows that we have more work to do, I have more work to do, in really establishing us, our business identity as the county, but thank you, Counselor Campbell.
Morris, was your question answered?
Yeah, I got the last comment, that seems to happen quite often. It was an article last week, I'm not sure it was about that, like, between Colville and Lasbri's down there, and I think the city of Lasbri's was more mentioned than the county was, and that's an ongoing thing. It's been like that all the time, as long as I've been on council. However, that's, I think you've got to hammer it on the media, I think, to make it sure that we do it correctly. My follow-up, I got some questions about that particle board from Strah, what they're looking into. I don't know much about it, but I believe there is a plant in Inisfield, too, what uses straw to make that particle board. Is that right? Or are they shut down, and what's the full story on?
Mr. Chairman, who did Counselor Dean Strah, I have to check on that, and I'll be very honest, I'm not sure about the status of the plant in Inisfield. This would be a brand-new plant, and the company is actually out of Manitoba, and they're kind of expanding their operations. They're very interested in Alberta, and especially the connection that there would be through the Highway 4, I-15 into the western United States. It makes logical sense there. So this, this current inquiry is not related to the company in Inisfield, but I have to check the status of Inisfield.
Just to speak to the Whole Leaf situation, and in general, our lack of knowledge of businesses that are located in Lethbridge County. We're working on a new strategy that we highlight Lethbridge County business every month or two months, and it'll be in the display case here, and that'll be happening in the next week or two. But there'll also be a lot of social media follow-up, so we're trying to present and highlight businesses in Lethbridge County, so that the surrounding people know that they're located in the county. And it'll give them some more exposure online, and also here when people come to the office, so that'll be coming in the next week or two. Right, Martin?
Correct. If I may, Mr. Chairman, to follow up on that. I would say that in the seven and a few year, a few months, seven years and a few months that I've been here at the county, I think the county has made steps forward... I think the county has made steps forward in establishing its own identity, not just in the business sphere, but as its own entity. Like, when I talk to people and I mention that I work for the county, people don't mistake it anymore for the city or whatever. Like, they really understand that. But it's an ongoing process. I mean, I think it's going to take years and years and years. As Counselor Zinstra mentioned, it's been, it's been happening for decades beforehand. My hope is that over the next 10, 20, 30 years, that rural municipalities will start to get recognized as they're due. And it's not just, well, there's Calgary, there's Edmonton, there's Lethbridge. It's always focused on the large urbans, but that people start to really recognize and appreciate what the rural municipalities bring to Alberta's table. But it doesn't happen overnight. It's an ongoing process. So, again, I think we've made some progress, and I think steps that I just outlined, other things that we're doing, working with the media, emphasizing that it's the county, not the city. It takes time, but eventually it starts to get some traction. It's an ongoing process.
Okay, thank you. Now, I have another question for you that, it's, we went to the agriculture tour that we had, the Ike Tour, I think it was last year or the year before. And we went to the berry fields in, in the Lethbridge County, close, picture view. That, the processing facilities that they have, you know the status and how far they are?
Don't their buildings done? Yeah, okay.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and also Hillary. Good, it's a good question. So I think you might be referring to the Haskap Berry Processing Facility?
Yes, it's called Prairie something from Rex, Rex, Amber.
Yeah, Prairie Hill, Prairie Hill Fruit. And yes, my understanding is not only that they've got their buildings done, but that they actually are operating. I don't know if they're operating at full capacity. I'm just trying to verify that right now. But they have a website up and running. And based on kind of what's on their website, it seems to indicate that they're, that they're going, at least to a certain degree. So that would be another success story. Again, value-added, a crop grown here in the county and in the greater Lethbridge area that's being worked on and processed and value-added in the county. It's what we want to see.
Well, he's got a large building right straight across from his, the B lot. And it's got the science office or whatever. Boom, that's pretty big.
Thank you, Counselor. Yes, that, I believe, is the processing facility there.
Okay, there's no more questions. Thank you, Martin. Morris?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. After that, I'll move the presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Martin. And now we're going to take a step back, and I would like a motion for the Diana Rong's presentation that we had before. Ken?
For information.
Okay, everybody a favor? And we did go to Martin, just everybody a favor for that one? Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Now we'll move on to some of the bylaws, and I think Hillary's going to do the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, counsel. So we have two bylaws to present to for first reading. First is bylaw 20-007, which is a road closure sale and consolidation of a portion of Sydney Road within subdivision plan 4,000 A U.
Where's Sydney Road?
Anybody want to guess where Sydney Road is?
Yeah, in three. Lucy How, so.
Lucy How subdivision.
I was going to say Australia.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
We have a lot of these very historical subdivisions in the county that all are given being roads, which I find fascinating, to be honest. But this is an application for a portion of Sydney Road, which is in the southeast corner of the Lucy How subdivision area. The applicant is the adjacent landowner, Darcy and Rachel Seabirds. They would like to close this portion of road, which measures 187.05 meters by 10.06 meters wide. The lands were taken originally as road right-of-way when the area was subdivided in 1913 and has never been developed for a road since the subdivision was created. The county has determined that this portion of road will not be required for future use and can be closed. Just for council's reference, it's not on this map, but right directly to the east is the Canamix Corridor. Right behind these subdivisions is the Canamix Corridor. So there will never be an access road that goes to the east in this location.
Sorry, Hillary, can you explain that a little bit for me? Where is the Canamix Corridor? I don't mean to.
No, that's fine. I wish I had it on here, Jan. I just.
Okay, can you show me on the map?
It's, the Canamix Corridor goes, this, this north-south extension goes right past these acreages and then connects to Highway three and then down to Highway four. So that's kind of that really long linear one that's kind of the bypass around Lethbridge. And this is the eastern extent. So the whole 3D property is right past Brockspur Business Park.
Oh, okay.
So it goes down there.
On the east side of Firthish?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I'll make sure that I have that on the map in the future so that it's easier to see where that's located. But that's the reason why this road will never be used in the future. So with that, it approved, the applicant would be required to consolidate the road closure area into their parcel, which I mentioned before, is just directly north of where the road allowance is.
It's a guy, I know before, we rented this part once. We used to go up this road from Europe and out.
Yeah.
So it'd be closed now.
No, not that road. The, this one is sitting here. No, no, not Lucy Street.
Okay.
That's Lucy Street.
Okay.
No, no, that remains open. That is a valid access. No, it's, it's this extension right here, this tiny little, heavily lit. It, it's not accessed or used by anybody at this point. With that, just to, to reiterate kind of what we, when we deal with first reading of a bylaw, we, county council always, as a prerogative, may deny first reading of a bylaw if there are concerns with the proposed road closure. But in the past and currently, we have legal advice which states that first reading of the bylaw shall be given as the applicant and the public have the right to attend and speak a public hearing, which is set up after first reading. The public hearing process allows county council the opportunity to hear out all positions on the bylaw and make an informed decision. If first reading is not given, the applicant would have the right to appeal that decision to the Court of Appeal at Alberta. So the recommendation is that the county council proceed with first reading of the bylaw to allow county administration to set up the public hearing, establish the date and time, and send out the notices to the adjacent landowners and also to inform utility companies. Occasionally, we need easements from utility companies when we close these roads. Bramo Kumura does those types of notices for us at this time. And so we will, once we have all the comments back, we'll set up that public hearing. I'm anticipating it'll be the first meeting in October. Are there any questions, the council, on this particular application?
Morris?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And for me, the question is, how did this come about that we should have a road closure down there? Like, has administration maybe been looking and see, hey, there is a road allowance down there, but it's not being needed? Or how did this come about?
No, these road closures are actually brought forward by the adjacent landowner. So they, the adjacent landowners, just being there, they would know that this was a right-of-way. And they, they don't really want people accessing onto that because that's where their property is. And so they can make the application, just like a land use bylaw on them, they can make an application to close a portion of road. So the first step is to do first reading, have a public hearing. It still has to be signed up by the Minister of Transportation after the public hearing has been completed. They, Minister of Transportation kind of has the ultimate say in whether a road can be closed or open because all roads are technically under the control of the province. So, but that's usually with these types of road closures, Counselor Zinstra, we're not, we're not actively going out and saying, oh, this road could be closed. People come forward and say, oh, we, you know, we want to know, can we close this road? What's the procedure when they make that?
Morris?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Kim. Yeah, that clears it up. I, I didn't believe that the administration had a, but, but, you know, if we can close this, close that. It has to be pursued by the sort of mandal with suggestion to it, I guess.
I know from time to time, we might, if somebody has encroachment on a right-of-way that's not developed, we might, we'll, we have in the past told them either to remove their encroachment or they could apply to close the road. So there is sometimes that suggestion to them, but the application does have to come from the landowners themselves.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The business park, just to the east, southeast there?
Yeah.
If we were to ever need to use that access to funnel traffic to, to the lights on the Brockspur Road, would, would that come in to use then?
Uh, no, just because of the Canamix Corridor, like, it goes, this, this piece of property here is actually owned by Alberta Transportation already. So there is no opportunity for access across here anymore. And they don't allow for, if this corridor is actually created, they will, they will not have, like, straight intersection interchanges. They will only have overpasses and service roads. So this, this portion of road really is, is not going to be, wouldn't be utilized in the future.
Okay, that was always my, that was always my thought, with the lights to use, like, a service road somewhere. But obviously, if the Canamix comes to the, the, the.
Yeah, that, that kind of kiboshes that, this particular area. But definitely in the future, when this area, if this area ever, where this site ever develops out, this road network on the west side would then be developed to funnel people to that, to Brockspur Road and, and better utilize those lights that are there, absolutely.
There's no more questions. So I'd like to call for a motion for the first reading. Bob?
I'll do, folks, 1098, road laws, will you approve?
You? Everybody a favor? That's Gary. Then we'll go to the, the next bylaw. Hillary, you want to proceed with that?
Yes. So this, this application is kind of a, one that's been in the long waiting in the wings. So to speak, this is in the section 26, so northwest 26, 820, west of the fort, which is directly east of the city of Lethbridge. This is an area where, a few years ago, you might recall, county council approved an area structure plan to allow for the development, subdivision development of the entire section. Yeah, and with this area, though, we did have some, kind of, we had some quite strict criteria in terms of when people could, what information they had to supply in order to be able to subdivide because drainage was a major concern in this area. And the parcel that I bring forward to you today is actually kind of one of the cornerstone properties in terms of developing in this area because this is where all the water goes. So they need to develop first in order to kind of facilitate development happening elsewhere in the entire section. So this application is to redesignate the north lot of Plan 7700 A U block set from Lethbridge or Refrige to Group Country Residential. The parcel is located, as I mentioned, in section 26, area structure plan, and they have met all the requirements of that plan. The applicant has submitted a comprehensive package to county administration to support the, to support their application, which includes a site sustainability assessment, traffic impact assessment, and a stormwater management plan. The application has been circulated to all county departments and external agencies for review. It is anticipated that the public hearing for this bylaw will be held the first meeting in September. So with that, we do recommend first reading of the bylaw, similar to the last one, just to allow the opportunity for the applicant and the public to attend and speak at the public hearing. And first reading of the bylaw will also allow county administration to proceed with setting up that hearing and sending out the notifications for the hearing itself. Are there any questions, the council?
Questions? Morris?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, no question, but I'd like to move the, move bylaw 20-016 for first reading.
Everybody a favor? That's Gary. Then we will move on to, we have no municipal services, community service, corporate services, so lots of administration. I think Ann was going to hand that one.
Good morning. Recently, in the news, there's been some documentation from rural municipalities of Alberta. And they're looking at the assessment model specifically with regards to the way oil and gas and pipelines are assessed, trying to alleviate some of the challenges with the economy in Alberta with oil and gas. We did receive some documentation on that and how Lethbridge County would be affected if this change goes forward. I'm going to ask Jen to come up and kind of give a little brief overview so we can have some more financial specifics. And also, our assessor, the county assessor, will be sitting in on a webinar tomorrow to get clarity on the four different scenarios. So Jen, if you can.
Thank you. Thank you, Ann. At this point, as it is a model and its estimate, there isn't a lot of information. But what I can tell you is that currently, our oil and gas revenues are around $1 million annually. So the overall impact to the county is minimal comparable, compared to other municipalities, specifically to northern ones. But it would mean that the county would have to look at other options to generate that $1 million, be it increased tax rates, which puts the burden back on the residents rather than the, the companies, or the machinery and equipment related to those, or a reduction to services somewhere along the way. So those are just items for consideration should this model be pushed through. I've been doing some reading, and I, there is a comment actually from Camrose County, who I think probably would be more significantly impacted than Lethbridge. But their quote from their press release was that their council administration are extremely concerned by the serious impacts of the decision because it means an increase in property tax, reduction of services, or a combination of both due to the loss of revenue. So although the intention, I believe, behind this is to create some competitiveness in that industry, you know, there's a ripple effect to municipalities as far as how to regenerate that, that revenue. On and aside from that also, from my perspective, a bit of concern is the bankruptcies and the receiverships that are coming from the existing oil and gas that we do have within the municipality. So we've seen a lot come through this past year. And, you know, I had Les kind of do a quick summary for me. And there may be some significant write-offs that the county is looking at in the future if these bankruptcies clear. So something else to consider as well with the, with the oil and gas industry right now.
Jen? So yeah, with, with this being another one, I mean, first, we got the 700,000 that we're going to be paying for leasing over what we did before. And now with this one, I find that downloading on the municipalities is, for me, it's kind of, looks like an unfair situation. And because, I mean, wouldn't that affect, like, the, the whole province? Every, every, every ratepayer in the province, that only the municipalities?
Well, I guess if, pardon me, Mr. Chairman, if, if the impact is that there's going to be tax rate increases because municipalities are losing revenue, then yeah, I guess, I guess it is an overall provincial issue for everyone.
Just when we get a bit more information, one thing I think we should do is outline our concerns and send a letter under, you know, under review. our concerns and send a letter under, you know, under Reeves, under the Reeves signature, forward that to Edmonton, once we get some clarity tomorrow on exactly what the effects are going to be. And as Jen alluded to, specifically our bigger concerns with the bankruptcy and how that's affecting us. We have to consider all the other downloading that's happening to us as well, leasing, and now this, so it is gonna affect our budget coming forward. So my suggestion would be to send a letter to, to, to the premier, et cetera, under Reeves, under the Reeves signature.
Do we need a motion for that? Is somebody willing to make the motion?
I'll move that there, Chairman.
Thanks, Morse. Steve?
Has the CIO and Reeves, have they been in kind of monthly contact with Grant Hunter? I, I, I hear some periodic meetings, but are they on an annual or a monthly basis or anything?
No, we haven't. We've seen him at a few funding events, and we've spoken both to him, and yesterday when Deputy Reeves and I were at the L N I D announcement, we did get to talk to Nathan. But those meetings have, unfortunately, when, during the height of the pandemic, we were having really good town hall meetings with premier and ministers on the phone. We did send a letter, hoping that those could continue, because they were very effective, and even if they could continue quarterly or biannually, but that didn't materialize. So those, those meetings have minimized. And I think, right now, with the amount of funding announcements that are going on, the local MLAs have been very busy, so. But we certainly could reach out to him and ask him to come in and have a conversation with all of council.
It wasn't so much that we needed a meeting, but I just see a draft letter here on page eight to, to the MLAs, just, we're, we're gonna send them both one, then?
Yes, I, I would agree with that. We'll give them a heads up, but we also, the draft letter is good, but we need to highlight, I think, our specific concerns too with the.
Yep. And with the policing costs and everything, and if we see the Leffbridge West and Leffbridge East on there also, would be good.
Yep, and I think, I think the premier too, and the minister of municipal affairs.
Yep.
Any more questions on the letter that we would like to send? Not, everybody a favor? That's carried.
Thanks, Chairman.
Move right on. Then we'll move on to council updates.
I cannot read Reeve Hickey's because he's away. July second, Highway three twenty announcement, July sixteenth, employee appreciation barbecue, and that was nice that we were able to let the employees know how much we appreciated them through this whole pandemic situation, and we did do a socially distance appropriate barbecue. July twenty second, met with the CIO. July twenty third, Leffridge County Council meeting. July twenty fourth, assessment model review webinar, and that was the one we were just speaking about. July twenty fifth was the announcement for the treatment beds in the county, the additional fifty treatment beds, and July twenty ninth, met with the CIO.
Okay, Tori?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On July the eighth, we have a Link Pathways Society Board meeting. Maybe I'll just provide, I know we, we had Henry at our last meeting to provide a little bit of an update, but the, the main crux of that meeting is just there's been a lot of momentum within the last month or so here, just trying to, I guess, figure out the best way forward, and then work with the S M R I D, the county, the town, and the city of Leffbridge, and just work forward on some memorandum, memorandums of understanding, just so that, I think maybe we were starting to run before we walked, just kind of, I guess, take stock of what, what needs to be done, and try and move forward in the, the best way possible, that we're, we're just making sure that we're very diligent moving forward. And I think, I think we've made a lot of headway, and I think we're starting to have some progress there, and, and it's just not, not all to talk, there's actually maybe some traction that can be had. On the thirteenth, had a road tour with Director of Public Operations. Jeremy was kind enough to show me the two chip seal roads, cement based, cement, they stabilized roads, happening out north of the river. I was unable to come to the initial tour that showed those, so I was able to take a look at those, and we also took a look at Stafford Lake Road. With COVID, they've seen a tremendous uptick in traffic out there. The, the lake has been heavily utilized as well as the campsite, so they've seen a real uptick in traffic. And obviously with that traffic comes a, a higher kind of load on that road, and it's showing the signs of that, so some residents brought that to my attention, and I forwarded that to Ann and Jeremy. July sixteenth, attended the employee appreciation, appreciation barbecue. The twenty third, we had a county council meeting, and again on the thirtieth, Ann, Larry, Dev, and myself met with Henry and Alvin, again from the Link Pathway, like I say, kind of firm some things up and kind of paint a path moving forward, so that hopefully we can have something for council to deliberate at our next meeting. Thank you.
Got a question for you, Tori, that the Stafford Lake, the traffic, more traffic coming in, it's, isn't that basically more and all light traffic that would not damage the road, have so much damage to the road, so that the heavy traffic would happen?
I think just from, from what I'm, from what I've heard from the residents, and what I saw myself, was just the, the sheer amount is, is causing damage. Mr. Chairman, it's not so much that, like you say, it's not heavy traffic, it's some truck trailer, recreational trailers, boat and light vehicle traffic, but just the sheer amount is exacerbating any areas where there might be potholing or any issues, it's just been really exacerbated by the amount of traffic.
Another one I had on the Link Pathway, there was way back last year, the year before, two years ago, whatever, when we first, when, when the Link Pathway was going, it was Leffridge County was gonna be doing the maintenance on there, and, but now we have, we have changed that to a donation. Is that still the idea that Leffridge County was gonna do, like did the maintenance on there and stuff?
I, I think that, that's yet to be determined. The original motion by council was that we enter into a discussion regarding the maintenance, so it was very vague. Would you like to, I, I guess at this point in time, that's yet to be determined, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I would agree with that. In September, after our meeting with the Link Pathway Committee, we'll be bringing forward a report just outlining what the expectations are from the Link Pathway Committee of the county, and then we'll have enough information so the council can make a determination at that time.
Okay. Then we got Robert.
July sixteenth, they played appreciation barbecue, and then twenty third, Leffridge County Council meeting.
Employee barbecue, and twenty third is the county council meeting.
Right, Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. July second, they had ten, had exhibition park board meetings, July twenty second, Community Futures, Leffridge Board Meeting, and the twenty third, County Council Meeting. And just on the exhibition, earlier this week, they were given notice, or all the exhibitions were given notice, made just that in September, they could continue, or they could kind of relaunch some programs or events at the, at the exhibition park, so there's a few trade shows and other things that have been scheduled, and it's actually kind of the busiest, or it's busier, it'll be busier this September than it was last September, just with what had been going on actually, so. It's kind of good news that things are kind of progressing.
I just, I just wanted to ask a question, and I'm sure I don't want the exact, but I imagine revenue is, how are they dealing with the loss of revenue at the exhibition?
Summer has always been downtime anyway. Up days isn't, isn't a moneymaker, so things are okay through the summer, so as, as long as things kind of progress through the fall and winter, things should be, should be okay. You did, the two major, oh, Omen Garden Show was canceled, that was in March, but the, the biggest show was, or the biggest moneymakers, Egg Expo, so it went the end of February, so there was down with the Omen Garden Show, but.
Can I follow up?
Yes, go ahead.
And just with the announcement of the twenty eight and a half million dollars, have, has there been any more information on the matching funding piece?
Uh, they're going to, uh, that'll be at county, our city council on Monday, and they're still working on potentially some federal money with, with the, with the MP currently right now.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Then I guess my turn. July second, I was a part of Cloud, did the Rural Crime Roundtable, and July twenty third, Leffridge County Council Meeting. And regarding the Rural Crime Roundtable, we had, we had a good meeting there. It was basically a lot, everybody kind of mentioning what was happening in their area and what, what could be done about that. And we had some, we had four MPs attending, and that was Mark Shields and Rachel Harder, Glenn Motz, and John Barlow were there. And as MLAs, it was Roger Reed and Joseph Chow was supposed to show, but of course he was not there. And then municipal leaders and Reeves and councillors that were there. But the, the crime is, is climbing, and it's about, right now, about thirty percent higher as it was even through the COVID, in the beginning of COVID, it was, it's really slowed down, but right after that, I guess, they weren't scared of the COVID anymore, and they started their, their crime again, and especially at the, at the blood reserve, they had a lot of crime with drugs and, and those kind of thing dealings. So they kind of are trying to keep them out of there, but what's happening now, which is right outside of the reservations, that's where the, the crime is happening now, right outside of it. And we hope to have, I hope to have another meeting in the end of August, that we can go ahead with that, and we want to keep, because the MPs were, were really involved in and going, and also the Roger Reed, the MLA, who was very effective in, in trying to bring it back to the government to see what we should do with that, so it was, it was a very interesting meeting, and I think that this is a meeting that, these meetings should keep on going, because I think it's important that we keep a handle on it. So, then we have Morse.
I just wanted to say, the Rural Crime, there's another issue that's coming up with dispatching, and that is something we'll bring a report forward, because they are now going to provincial dispatching rather than local dispatching, so that's an emergent issue that we are hopefully bringing information back towards.
Bob, call up your counsel. Morse, thank you.
Morse? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I have two meetings with the North County Department of Water for July the eighth and the thirteenth, and their big issue is trying to get the rate modeling in place for the licenses, and I think they are gonna, I think they are making progress on that, and once that's in place, and I guess then the county maybe can step up to the plate to see where are we gonna go with the licenses on that one. And July the sixteenth, I went to the barbecue, you know, why wouldn't I want to go to a barbecue, that's for the Employee Appreciation Day, and that's the County Council Meeting. However, it is, the one I never reported, and that's my fault, I guess, I also was met down there when the, looked at the upgrading of the Iron Springs Road, that two miles, and I think it looks promising. I also went to the Rutherford Road, and I think it's for what it's supposed to be, for what that contract says, what it was gonna do, I think that's something hopeful. That's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Just, just a question, oh, the last one, Morse, that, and maybe it's a question for a friend in the corner there, that I got a question asked, well, what are we doing with that bridge? Like, the, the road is done, then, then it comes out a little bit, and then there's a ridge of the gravel and everything that is sitting there, and it was asked, because a lot of, especially on the Ruilish Road, that people like to mow the sides and everything of that road, so that would kind of be impossible with this ridge of sand and gravel there.
In regards to the Iron Springs Road.
Chairman, can you come up?
You.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Chair. In regards to the Iron Springs Road, we rolled some talks all down off that one, so we'll be going in and just doing some post cleanup on that. We're going to be doing some heroin and dusting up that material, just lining it back into the shoulder. In regards to the Rutherford Road, and the vast majority of the bridges that were along the acreage side, which was primarily most of the east side roadway, have been, have been cleaned up. There is still some residual on that road, especially for some ground material, because of the heat and because of the bleeding effect potential of the chip seal. I have the contractor leave that, leave that, some of those fines on there, basically blow out of any, any potential bleeding of the oil. A little bit of dust is usually typically more acceptable to get oil on your vehicle, so.
Okay, so then, which, there's, there's not gonna be a layer of oil coming over top of those, of those roads? No, eventually all these, these chips will be, be driven into the, into the, into the road itself, yeah?
Yeah, the vast majority of the fines still left on the surface, or just basically for a blotting purpose, essentially through the summer heat, typically you get a little bit of bleeding of that chip seal oil. Now, when the, when they did the chip seal initially, they do an initial layer, they do a tack oil, put the chips in, pack those in, and they let that cure for a day to come back, and then they lay another layer of oil, allow the chip to basically bleed in, and then after, usually typically six months to a year later, basically, it's just like a black sheen on there. So it'll look like a textured surface. The chip seal is just supposed to act as a grid surface essentially for traffic.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Morse?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and follow up on that one, there was one person, he lives actually on the Rutherford Road down there, and he also checked the Iron Springs Road, and he was very disappointed in the smoothness of that road, like, Nigel with Miss Sullivan, I'm not gonna reveal down here how fast it went, because I think we made it to that, they still can arrest me, I suppose. However, you know, the simple thing is, it is not pavement, you know, and pavement is pavement, and that should be smooth, but this thing, you can feel a little, a little bit of a ripple down there, but I think what we're gonna be looking at down there, you know, the principle of that type of road that they put in place, the basically longevity it's gonna have, it's gonna be a lasting road.
Yeah, and, and the cost effectiveness of this kind of treatment to satisfy your base, and then have a, have a wearing surface is very, very sustainable. The one thing with the, you know, there, there have been a few concerns brought about the roughness, a lot of that is due to the loose aggregate that's still on the surface, because a lot of that still is not clean up, like even in some areas, you can see where there's almost a small rippling or washboard effect, but that's basically loose aggregate on top of essentially a hardened surface. So if you actually, through gravel on top of pavement, you would have that exact same type of effect. So once that starts to wear off, and that blotting effect is done, we see some of the areas that have been essentially almost burned clean, it almost looks like a, a light black oil surface essentially. It's a, it's a patience portion too, right? I mean, people think it is gonna be like pavement, and then they see poos gravel on it, and they're concerned.
But pavement is probably two, six times more than what that process.
And do you wanna relate to what the comment we had from one of the landowners yesterday?
Oh, how happy he was that he really liked the road surface, and he said if we can just leave the speed limit the way it is, then he would be very happy. But that's something we need to have a broader discussion about, the speed limits.
And, and that it were a little rough was good too, then they wouldn't do like more of it.
Exactly. Yes, that's right, I forgot that.
I, I just wanna add one other little piece in addition. I just want to add one other little piece in addition. When you, when you chip seal a cement stabilization surface, the idea is to allow some of the reflective cracking to potentially come through that surface as well. There is a potential, when you get down into your second rotation of surface treatment on this, you can decide whether or not you would like to look at an additional chip seal, which they do quite commonly on highways around here. Or there is a potential that you could do a thin overlay of pavement on top of that. So that is something that Special Areas has actually been doing in the last, over the last five years. They've been doing lots of cement stabilization, allowing the surface to basically chip seal, allowing it to set for X amount of years, and then coming through afterwards, adding a layer of G B C, and then adding a layer of pavement, and they're showing good results. And that's all, Special Areas is all funded by the province.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. You don't have to do that.
Just going to take a break because our company started.
Yeah, well, just, can I have a motion to, to accept these reports of information? Steve? Everybody a favor? Carry it. Okay, what, I didn't hear what you said.
Just if we could take, we can maybe take a seven minute break and come back at 11:30, because then we can open up the podium again.
Are we in camera? As I move, that we're going to have.